I'd like to call to order the August 26, 2024, regular city council meeting. If you'll please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Deaton, if you'll let the roll call show everyone is present, and we'll move on to approval of the city council minutes for August 12, 2024. Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we accept the agenda at the minutes as presented.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. No bills this evening. Moving on to approval of the agenda for this evening. Councilmember Dilg.
I'll move the agenda as presented.
A second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. No consent agenda this evening, and we'll move on to public comment. Public would like to address the board. You have two minutes. Please state your name and address for the city clerk. And we'll close public comment at this point and move on to a discussion of downtown with the DDA Director Nate Mack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. A quick wrap-up on the food truck rally for Saturday. Overall, it was a pretty good event. We had 12 food truck vendors. I heard that there was a lot of positive feedback from both the food trucks and the vendors at the market. We saw an increased number of foot traffic over what we normally do for the event, so that was good to see. We do have another upcoming event at the farmer's market. It's going to be an art event on September 14, and the road closure is going to be the same from 10 Mile to Liberty, and having vendors in the street there. A couple updates on DDA incentive programs. So last week, I gave out both an application for the sign incentive, which is to do the blade sign that projects over the sidewalk, as well as an application to potentially do a mural downtown. So the business is still exploring if they're going to be able to do it. They're thinking maybe next year at some point, but at least we have some interest in those programs. So that's good to see. With that, I think that's, sorry, you got another update regarding the liquor license at 228 South Lafayette. They're probably about a couple of weeks out yet from getting the determination of whether they're going to have the license. So they've done the investigation, and now they're waiting on whether the commission's decision is going to be good or bad for them. So that's it for me.
Any questions for DDA Director Nate Mack? Councilmember Hanson.
Just a quick, it's been about a month or so before we got, since we last got some updates regarding the EV chargers. Any movement or?
Yeah, so I've been in contact with them a couple of different times. So what happened was General Motors had promised them X number of Level 2 chargers, and with the slower uptake in EVs, they backed out of that agreement with Charge EV. So they've been able to secure some third-party EV charging stations, which they're waiting to arrive. They've, I've talked with them on the phone about amending the contract that we originally signed to get at least three of the locations in place for us. So I'm waiting for them to come back with the language of that contract before we can move forward with making changes to it.
Have we explored even reaching out to like Charge Point or Ready Charger to, you know, because they service their own chargers instead of just having to keep treading water here?
Yeah, so Charge Point was the initial company that I was, that I had reached out with before, and that, I mean, I literally heard nothing from them for about a year. So not too excited about trying to reach out to Charge Point again.
Yeah, Ready, I guess, is based out of Detroit, but I'm not sure how busy they are versus, you know, just pursuing.
Yeah, because I mean, we were supposed to have, have them at the end of the first quarter this year, so.
Yeah, goodness. No, thank you.
Councilmember Dilg.
Thank you. With the liquor license you were talking about, just the way that you said it, is there a reason to believe that they might not get it, or is it just because you don't know?
I, I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, nothing specific?
No, nothing specific. That stands out or anything like that, but yeah, we'll see.
And if they're ready, if they get that, can they open, or is there any waiting period, or?
Once they have all of the, whatever they need to pay to the state, I think they have to do like an inventory for their alcohol, but once they have that in place, then they can start serving. So it's shortly after they get the license they can serve.
I was just hoping for Pumpkin Fest. I thought that would be a nice thing.
It would be great, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mosher.
In your last report, you said something about the facade grants downtown, and that you had granted one to one of the business owners. I think it's that 228, whatever. And in that report, you said that was the only one we would probably be able to do this year. What is the dollar amount on those? And I mean, is it different with each request, or is there a max?
So there's a, there's a maximum of $10,000. So we're able to do one at $10,000, basically. So we, previously, we had it set up at $2,500 as an incentive, and after speaking with multiple business owners, they're like, that's not really even enough to make a difference or incentivize me to actually do the work. So we increased the amount, and we got one, which is all we can do for.
Okay. Is that like a matching grant? They expend the funds first, and then we reimburse them? Okay.
It's reimbursement.
And then the other thing is, I see the chamber, you put this, well, it was in the packet, they're doing the canine crawl on September 14. That's the same day you're having the art thing. They're, they're not gonna compete with each other or maybe?
No, I don't think so. So their, their group is going to be doing the route. I can't remember the route off the top of my head.
Yeah, the routes here, but are they going to be staying on the sidewalks, or are they gonna?
Sidewalk, yeah.
Since we're going to have that part of the street closed off, hopefully, they're not going to be in, walking around the artwork, are they?
I don't think so.
Can we have them not? I just, the only reason I say that is because dogs are allowed at farmer's market, and the person that's next to me has had a dog lift a leg on her product before, and I just would hate to see that happen to artwork.
Okay. I mean.
Just saying.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, she missed. But I think she ended up throwing away a couple pies, because, you know.
I will, I guess, talk to them about that.
Yeah, make sure they're cleaning up after their doggy doodles, because there's always one guy that comes by every morning and leaves a nice little gift for the guy on the other side of me, and we end up cleaning that up, too. The people, some people just don't like to clean up after their pets.
Yeah.
So as long as there's not going to be any conflict between the two, I guess. I just wanted to ask. That's all I had. Thanks.
Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have the opportunity to enjoy the food truck rally. It was great. It was a great turnout. I was monitoring discussions on social media, and there were many questions about extended hours for the food trucks. And that got me to thinking, would there be a possibility of inverting the farmer's market with the food trucks, so that the market is on the street, food trucks are in the lots, so that when the market's over, the street is cleared, the trucks could continue to operate?
I don't think so, unfortunately. Just the, the vendors pay for their specific space that they're in in the lot, and people are kind of counting on them to be where they're at. So yeah, I don't think that's entirely reasonable.
Okay, good for them.
Yeah.
All right, thank yous.
Councilmember Kivel.
I was wondering, is there, could you tell me what the situation is at the tavern building? Like, are they providing drawings for the rebuild and things like that, or, I mean, are we just sitting, waiting for them to?
Yeah, so they're, they're still working on the build-out of that building as well. They're also waiting on the state for their redevelopment license, too. So they're kind of at a, kind of just hurry up and wait point right now until they hear back on the license, so.
Does it seem reasonable that, that the state won't end up providing them with the license? It seems like they're, there's losing a lot, a lot of time, and they're paying rent for it, so.
Yeah, so I don't, I mean, it's tough. The only reason why I'm unsure on the redevelopment liquor license is because it's, it's a different process than a normal liquor license that you have to go through. So I think they do a little bit more of a deeper investigation, not into the, the person themselves, but more of like the business operation, and if they find something that's inconsistent with what the statute says, then they're more likely to, to deny the request. And so, yeah, I mean, there are more stringent requirements. You have to have investment requirements. You have to have hours of operation. You have to pay the, the enhanced fee to the state, the $20,000 fee. And so there are a number of different things they look at when they're doing that. So and they have to make sure that there's been the overall investment within the DDA district within the last five years to meet the minimum threshold to be able to issue licenses. And so there's just a lot that goes into it. And so there have been instances where folks have been denied, but there's also been instances where they've been approved for it. So I'm just not sure, because we haven't done it before.
Do we meet the, the limits for what our, our stuff is?
Yeah, we do. So I believe, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I believe it's about 12 additional liquor licenses based off the investment in the DDA district that we could access through the redevelopment process. I think it's about 12. I could be wrong, though.
All right, well, thank you. Okay, thanks a lot. Appreciate it, Nate. Moving on to the fire chief's report with Chief Thorington this evening.
Mayor, council, good evening. We are currently at 753 instances as of the meeting tonight. The sergeant promotional process is complete, and Micah De Meyer was the one who came on top, and he's been promoted to sergeant. We recently hired Ellie Notchell as a high school cadet. She's one of two now we have, and both her and Michael Ulrich were accepted to the Hollow Fire Academy, which is good news. Engine tube returned from the, the repair shop, new fuel tank. All our trucks are in service now, if I would. So we did receive a small grant from the state of Michigan for three sets of turnout gear. It's for up to $10,400. And then our EMS state inspection for our apparatus, where all the apparatus are licensed by the state of Michigan, has annual inspection, and Captain Conrad headed that up, and she did a great job, and that passed today, too. So that's kind of all I have.
Okay. Questions for Chief Thorington this evening? Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
Moving on to the police chief's report with Chief Bakie this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Just got a few things. We swore on our, one of our cadets, which we hired last week, his name's Alex, so he'll be, hopefully, get him into our cadet recruit program, and then we can go ahead and put him through the academy. So we're waiting on that. We also have another cadet that we're going to be hiring, hopefully, early next month that is also going to be part of our cadet recruit program. That's what it's, that's what it's looking like. We also have another officer who is coming from a different department. Looks like we gave them a conditional offer, so now we have to start a background on that subject, and hopefully we'll have him by the end of September, early October. Then we have another potential officer that we're still working with to start a background on that. So we are starting to build our numbers up. Hopefully, I'm hoping that by the end of October, we'll be up to at least 15 sworn, and a couple of cadet recruits that are slated to get into the academy. We also are going to be doing a recruiting early September in, at Oakland, which has, I think, 19 pre-service, so we have a lot of potential there as well. So I'm pretty optimistic on that. We did receive all of our computers for our MDCs and our mounts, so we're ready to go ahead with Oakland County Radio to get those installed. We need those done by next October, so we do have some time. So hopefully, we'll get that, those in pretty quick. We, what else do we have going on? I think that's all I got right now. Oh, the monument, yes. So I'm going to have a meeting with Jeff over at Superb Fabricating. Hopefully, he's going to get me those numbers for the monument. I'm hoping, I'm going to give him a call tomorrow, but he said earlier this week, so I haven't heard from him yet, but I'm going to try to get some numbers, and then he wants to have a meeting, and we're going to sit down and see where we're at for the first responders monument. And that's all I've got. Got some questions.
Okay, chief. Any questions for Chief Bakie this evening? Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've been getting out and about, and I've noticed that the crosswalk for the rail trail on 11 Mile, cars quite often fail to stop for pedestrians at the crosswalk. Can you remind us all what the laws are related to that?
Appreciate the question. So yes, if, if the pedestrian is in the crosswalk and the lights are flashing, yes, you have to stop for the pedestrian.
Well, there's no light at 11 Mile.
Yeah, 11 Mile. When they, or I'm sorry, when the, yes, if there's lights there. So 11 Mile, yes, if they're crossing, to slow down through that, that's a caution area, correct. We can put, and we have done in the past, the speed monitors, the speed signs, to kind of get a gauge on what the, what the speeds are there. But once the pedestrian does take that, that walk, yes, you're supposed to stop. And I can have officers up there kind of monitor it and just kind of be in the area. But you are, yes, that is a concern. I want to remind all the citizens to heed that area for the pedestrians.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mosher.
What would it take to install the flashing lights down there?
Great question. We'd have to kind of get ahold of TIA and the Oakland County Road Commission to study that area, correct? And, and then go ahead and install them, so.
It's already in this year's budget to be installed.
Okay.
We're working with the, we're working with the township right now. We're just having conversations with the supervisor next week on that, try to move that forward to split that project 50/50, as we discussed in some prior meetings.
Good deal. Thank you.
Chief, any update on the folks that are setting up camp in the historic village?
Oh, the, at night, the, so we have, I haven't seen any reports of them as of late, but there is a, the, the park is closed at 11:00. So our officers are aware of that. They've been keeping an eye on it, so if they're there, they will be asked to leave.
Do you know if they've needed to remind the people of that?
I haven't seen anything. I think they might have gone elsewhere, but I'll check into it, and I'll give you, I'll give you an affirmative comment once I get a little bit more, but I haven't seen anything as of late.
Okay. Thank you very much.
What am I missing? What's happening?
There's some individuals that are staying and sleeping in the park. So yes, the park is public. It's just at, at night or at dawn, I think it's dawn, I have to look at the actual ordinance, but the park is closed, so no one can be in the park then. So we're reminding these individuals that we still have an ordinance on that, so, but I believe we're working with them. I think we also reached out to them, offered them assistance to either go somewhere or Active Faith also, I think, has been dealing with them as well. So we're trying to help them in the best that our ability that we can do, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have no unfinished business this evening. So move on to new business number one, which is installation of a 750 KW standby generator at the wastewater treatment plant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. The South Line Water and Wastewater Department has allocated funds in this fiscal year, the 2024-25 budget, for the purchase and installation of a 750 kilowatt standby generator. The generator has been ordered, and it's expected to be delivered between Sept, late September and early October. I do have an update to that. The build date, complete, completion build date is October 10. So delivery would be 10 days to 14 days after that. HRC has provided the installation specs and submitted them for bidding. Three contractors responded with bids ranging from $193,010 to $499,536. After evaluating the bids, we recommend awarding the contract to O'Donnell Electric of Whitmore Lake, Michigan, with a bid of $193,010 to be funded from line item 592-557-972. Supporting documents, we have attachment one, which is the letter of recommendation by HRC. Attachment two is the bid sheet. Possible courses of action, approve, not approve installation of the 750 kilowatt standby generator for the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $193,010.
Councilmember Bogart.
How is the generator?
I need a motion in a second to bring it to the floor for discussion.
Sorry, my apologies. I'd like to make a motion to approve the installation of a 750 kilowatt standby generator for wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $193,010 from line item 592-557-972.
I'll second. I'm sorry, who was that? Councilmember Dilg?
No.
Thank you.
Kurt Swile.
Kurt Swile, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion? Councilmember Bogart.
How is the generator fueled?
Diesel.
Okay. And how long of a runtime on, on like a typical tank?
One tank, the, the tank is just over 1,600 gallons, so it's a stationary tank, comes with the generator. That will last approximately 24-hour period.
Okay. So enough time to keep it filled?
So usually, yes. Usually, when we have a power outage, we have Corrigan Oil on standby, and they deliver emergency diesel fuel to us, usually daily, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson.
So reviewing the, the breakdown of cost from the three bids, I was taken aback a bit by the difference of price. For example, I mean, we had one contractor, you know, that had a significant difference related to the generator install cost, and then also another contractor, you know, the fish, finish and grading site restoration. Is, can you give us a little bit of backstory on the, the difference in cost there? I mean, like, it was substantial.
So most of these, all of them are electrical contractors, so they're subcontracting most of this out. So I don't have a definitive answer. I have talked to Mark Darga, he's in the audience right now. We discussed it, and the specs are, are out there as long as they do. According to the specs, we're not concerned as long as they do it.
And I guess just for my peace of mind, have we worked with this contractor before, or has HRC?
We have not, but HRC has looked into it, yes. And so they gave a thumbs, thumbs up to that particular, so.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kivel.
So the, the diesel fuel tank, is there, I mean, is that the well there, everything's going to end up working out fine? There's no concern of having to augment something like that?
So, no, not, not, we, we also have a standby diesel tank on site, too, that runs the present generator. So we thought at this time, rather than rerun any of that fuel line out to this new generator, it would be best that we have an enclosed tank. So it's a double-walled sealed tank, so there's no issue whatsoever for that being on site.
It's just on, on the ground?
It's right, it's, this generator will sit on top of the fuel tank.
Oh, I see. Okay. Well, yeah.
It's all in one. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a great setup, so.
Okay.
There will be no long transfer of fuel like we do presently with our current generator, so.
Well, my understanding was that the generator is actually outside of the building, correct?
The generator is outside. It's in, it's own enclosure. It's not inside the building, so.
Okay, so are you, so you're relying on the fact that it's a double thing to protect it, like it won't leak as a product of that?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
That's, I mean, that's standard on those.
Okay. All right, yeah, I, I just, you know, I mean, everybody's trying to end up being as good with nature as possible, you know? It'd be terrible to end up finding out.
If you recall, all of those, even the diesel tank was an underground tank back in the 80s, 90s. Those have all been taken out, and they've been replaced with a double-walled, above-ground diesel, gas, whatever.
Yeah, good. Okay, cool. Does anybody use gas?
Not gas. You see a lot of propane generators. I've spoke.
I'm natural gas I'm talking about.
Natural gas, sorry. Yeah, natural gas generators are very popular. In fact, nine of our lift stations have the natural gas. You get into the bigger units, you lose a little bit of efficiency, and I talked to our service guys that service those, and, and they kind of steered me to these diesels over propane, or natural gas. So that's why we decided not, I, I, they, they just last. These diesel engines, they run forever, so.
I can see that. I, I just think the.
Obviously, you have the, the fuel issue, but I, I think at this point, we go with the diesel.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, thank you.
We have a, a motion and a second. City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote.
Kivel?
Yes.
Kurt Swile?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. New business number two. Replace the fire station lighting with LEDs. Chief Thorington, Ms. Joris?
Yep. We're looking to replace the station lighting, the current lighting, with LEDs. Our current light fixtures are outdated, and the newer fixtures will be much more efficient. It's projected that it'll reduce electricity consumption from the new fixtures and pay for itself within five years. It was budgeted for a 24, 25-year fiscal year. Tyrell Electric was the low bid. His bid is, quote, is attached. And the possible course of action is to approve or not approve replacement of the current fire station light fixtures, LED fixtures, from Tyrell Electric in amount of $16,172 from account line item 101-336-972.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the replacement of the current fire station light fixtures with LED fixtures from Tyrell Electric in the amount of $16,182 from account line item 101-336-972.
Support.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Hanson.
Just want to make the comment that this is precisely the kind of improvement that would be showcased in an energy audit, and I definitely commend you for taking that action to make that step forward for the city to save us that kind of money in the future. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote on this one.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kurt Swile?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kivel?
Yep.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. New business number three. Replacement of the fire station roof.
All right. We're looking to replace the roof, the fire station portion. The EMS side of the building is newer and doesn't need to be replaced, just the fireside does. There are some attached pictures, I believe with a quote, that you could take a peek at, that it shows the difference in where, I guess, on the, on the roof. It was approved in the 24, 25-year budget to replace the roof on the fire station side. There are three quotes obtained. Ferguson Roofing was the lowest of $59,100. The references are all checked out. So the course of action, I'm sorry, the quote is also attached. The course of action is to approve or not approve the replacement of the current fire station roof from Ferguson Roofing in the amount of $59,100 from line item number 451-802-002.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the replacement of the current fire station roof
from Ferguson Roofing in the amount of $59,100, from account line item 451-802-002.
Second. Councilmember Dilg?
Oh, I was, I was waiting, I forgot to wait for the second, but I had a question.
Oh, you're, who had the second minute? Kibble, did you make the second? Yeah, thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
The account number is actually missing the fund code, which is 401, for the capital improvement fund, which was budgeted. So it would be 401, 451, 802, 002.
Who's paying attention now? All right, let's retract that motion and make it with the right account number then, if you would. Councilmember Hanson?
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the replacement of the current fire station roof from Ferguson Roofing in the amount of $59,100, from account line item 401-451-802-002.
Still support? Very good. Now, any further discussion? Councilmember Dilg?
Thank you. I, when the outlier is the high one, I don't get to, I don't get that worried, but when the outlier in pricing is the low one, I just get a little concerned, especially when it comes to a roof. How confident are we with this company? Do we have any history with them?
Yes, I talked with the other two higher quotes, and I believe that the biggest reason is the difference in the quote is they're bigger companies and looking for bigger jobs. This guy is more local, but the references did all check out, yes.
Great, thank you, that's all.
Councilmember Hanson?
I would be remiss to not ask, after approving the last item, if there was any sort of energy savings that we might be expecting from this new roof, added installation, you know, conserving the heat slash, you know, air conditioning, et cetera. Is there, was there any expectation that was put forth by the contractor? Or would maybe the higher bids have produced a better cost savings in the long run, or?
No, actually, I'm sorry, they both, they all have the same minimum standards, and it will increase the R value in the rip off the decking and replace new, and the R values have increased the requirements since the old roof was put in. So it should increase or decrease our heating and cooling.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Kibble?
Is this going to end up having like a white reflective surface on it?
Yeah, it's like that rubber roofing.
On, like the one on the HVA side, isn't that what?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I mean, that should end up giving us a little bit of relief in the summer and stuff, so. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote.
Kibble?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Bogert?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kurtzweil?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Any discussion regarding the budget this evening? All right, we'll move on to public comment, and again, the, if you wish to address the board, the, it's a two-minute timeline. Please state your name and address for the city clerk. And we'll close, close public comment at that point, and go to the managers' report with city managers on that.
Few items I want to update city council on, the road improvement projects continue. They're making final repairs to the Eagle Point subdivision. Their plans are to repave the top coat of asphalt in that subdivision the week of Labor Day. Also, Brookfield pavement removal continues, as well as the continued pouring of additional concrete sections within that subdivision. We're still working with priority waste, they continue to remove trash and recycling in this city. This week's collection was much better than the prior week, and we're hoping to continue this upward swing and see improvements each week in the collection. The 2023-24 audit, we're just completing that now. We expect our auditors to be making a presentation to city council at the October 14th meeting. The property maintenance code, which was requested to be worked on, the city attorney, myself, and our ordinance officer were working on that, and we expect that that will be on the agenda for the next city council meeting. And that's all here for this evening, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions for city managers on that? Councilmember Kurtzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I had a couple of questions on the, the new ordinance, property maintenance ordinance on the nexus weeds. I want to make sure that our definition of what a weed is does not include those weeds typically that are associated with pollinator gardens, because you do have milkweed for, that is also there. So I'm going to be very careful at reading how you're defining weeds. Additionally, many gardens, mine, myself, that I have, that are cultivated and maintained, do have some weeds in them, because the milkweed that is in those gardens is there for a very specific person, purpose. But, you know, it's not outside, I mean, it's maintained inside of a garden area. If you go across the street, you'll see the planting of that garden, which is very good. Clear integration of plants that are favorable to environmental concerns. Additionally, I think she's growing vegetables over there, in her front yard and on the side yard. So I'm going to be taking a pretty careful look at this, and making sure that those individuals that are using their property for good purposes, that are keeping it up, you know? Nicole across the street, she keeps her garden up. There's a house I just looked at about two weeks ago over in Hunter's Creek. Their whole yard is garden, the whole yard, whole yard, everything in the yard is a garden. So I want to make sure that these individuals are going to be, continue to engage in their gardening activities without being penalized. I'm not talking about the height of the weed, or the height. When it's in the lawn area, what I'm talking about are people who are maintaining gardens that may be putting in what you are defining as nexus weeds.
The ordinance is very specific by saying the term weed shall not include, you know, certain vegetation, but shall not include cultivated flowers and gardens.
Okay, well.
If those are cultivated flowers and gardens, it's something completely different than if just somebody's just allowing something to grow, and they have one milkweed in there, that does not define that as being a cultivated garden, though.
Well, if somebody has a little spot in their front yard, and they carve it out, and they put three or four milkweeds there, and they mow around that.
Absolutely, that would be allowed.
That could constitute their garden that they want to maintain, even though some people may say that milkweed is a nexus weed. So I just.
If it is cultivated, yes, that would be allowed by definition.
Okay, just want to let you know, I'm kind of sensitive about it, so I'm going to be watching that, because I have a lot of gardener friends in town, and, you know, I'm a little bit of their advocate for them, want to make sure that they're able to keep it up. How are we going on the landscaping contract?
The city attorney, our firm, our law firm, sent me another contract on Sunday, and I forwarded that on and had conversations with the landscape people just today. So I expect to get that back, and we'll continue to move forward. It's just been back and forth between language, between their representatives and our attorneys to make sure everything is correct regarding not only plantings, but also property maintenance.
So what is your anticipated timeline on getting this in place? Because we've almost, because, here's my concern. My concern is, is that we have a lot of activities that are coming into South Lyon in the next couple of months. The weather projection is supposed to be fairly good. We may have a very dry fall, I'll have to go back and look at my farmer's almanac, but it hasn't been that off. It's about 80% correct. So you're going to have a lot of activities going on, you're going to have a lot of people in the downtown. You know, you want to make sure that the memorial over there in the historical village is cleaned up. I don't know if anyone's been over there yet, cleaning the weeds out of that, they looked pretty bad about two weeks ago. I went back down to Paul Baker Park, looks better, want to thank DPW and those that went in and sort of spuffed it up a little bit. I spent some time down there myself. So we have some areas that are sort of key to the city, where we're going to have a lot of people in town in the next 60, you know, 90 days, and, and we still don't have a landscaping contract in place. You know, I hope that they're ready to go as soon as that contract is in place, and we're not waiting for next spring.
No, we're not, the landscaping company is very excited about doing this work in South Lyon.
Okay, all right, I have your assurance on that? Okay, okay, because I'm staying, I'm staying on this stuff.
Yeah, you can.
Okay, thank you, you've been very patient with me, and I know it's been difficult sometimes. Next, I just wanted to let you know that there, I got a couple of phone calls, so I drove by today and took a look. There is a tree limb that is down, it's not on city property, but the limb itself has fallen on the Eastman area along Reynolds Parkway, and it's real close to South Lyon Collision. So you may want to contact that property owner and tell them that they need to get that tree limb off, because it's, I mean, it's touching the sidewalk. And I don't know if more of the tree is bad, and more of it's coming down, but it's a very large branch, very large. So thank you.
Councilmember Dilg?
Thank you, I have a couple of things. First of all, I saw the wall up on the trail, it looks so great, it looks so much better than it used to look. I was just wondering, do you think that it's a potential, or do we think that it would just be graffitied? To have some kind of a mural or something on there, just so it looked, you know, kind of jazz it up a little bit?
Excuse me, I think in the past, we've had the chalk art on certain sections of that wall, and, you know, that certainly could be considered, the culture arts putting something on. But yeah, if you do do a mural, and if it is prone to having graffiti like some of those walls are, you would hate to have somebody paint a mural for so many thousands of dollars and then have it damaged. But I think that the chalk art does work well out there, because then they could just repaint over that with that same chalk.
Right, yeah, that's probably.
The wall does look great, it's, you know, curing, it's, you know, 15 feet tall, 100 feet long, you know, two feet thick, so it's not just like a regular small slab, so they still have the protective material there. But I appreciate Patriots Concrete working on that wall and getting that done.
Yeah, it looks so much better, and, yeah, so I think that it makes sense, it probably would get graffiti, but if we could do the chalk wall or something after that, I think it would be great. And the other thing is, we talked about this a little bit, and I discussed it with the mayor on the ordinance that Councilmember Kurtzweil was just talking about. I just, I think it's a bad look for us to say that the city and the schools are exempt from the ordinance. And when I talked to the mayor, I understood, you know, there's some undeveloped areas that would make sense, but I just feel like if there's some way, and you don't have to answer this right now, but just a thought on it, is there's some way to say not exempt us from things, from areas in neighborhoods where we own the property or something. I know there's property in my neighborhood that the city cuts. I just would hate, I just think it's a bad look to say that we are totally exempt from it, if we're putting that on other people.
We can certainly discuss it at the meeting, and we'll discuss those reasons.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Councilmember Moser?
Working off what Councilmember Kurtzweil was talking about, I don't remember talking, what, who is this landscaper that we're writing this contract for?
Well, we're not writing a contract for them, they had submitted a contract to us, and our review. I'd rather not talk about that until the meeting, just because I think it'd be important.
Okay, what's the dollar amount?
Tens of thousands of dollars, because it's installation of. Yes, and that's what I've been doing, and I'll be discussing that at that particular meeting, because I contacted seven different landscaping companies to do this. And it's not only for maintenance, but it's also for installation at numerous locations throughout the city, so.
Right, well, I just, you know, I haven't heard who the company is and any dollar amounts, but yet we're going into writing contracts already, so.
Yeah, they submitted a contract to us, and then our attorney looked at it, reviewed it, gave it back to them, they gave it back, and so forth.
Answered my question, that's good, thank you.
Councilmember Kibble?
I had been on the bike path down at the south end of Eight Mile, and that field has been cleaned up. Or is that in prep of something?
That field that was cut was just the first portion of where our potential parking lot will go in the future for Volunteer Park. Next to that was where the first phase of the pollinator, pollinator garden was going to go. That needed to be cleaned out. Jeff Archie and I, DPW superintendent, walked those fields, and it may not look like it, but it is, it's probably five feet tall. You know, it may only look like it's only a couple of feet tall, but a lot of weeds, unfortunately, not a lot of pollinator items, but it's mostly grasses that were in there. But we had to discover what was there, and for them, what would need to be done. We've been working with our engineers about the total cost for installing a parking lot there, because there is a need to put in a culvert, and through the county, an acceleration and de-acceleration lane, so that is kind of an expensive portion. But we wanted to lay it out, so when we do in fact put in the parking lot, that there's a good viewing area so people can see where the pollinator garden, because we don't want to pull into pollinator garden, and then once, remove it once we put in the parking lot.
I mean, you and I extensively talked about this, and I kind of figured that was the deal, but I think that that's the kind of thing I would like to have forewarning on, rather than having to just bump into it on my own, and then have to assume what might be going on.
Yeah, and that was DPW cutting it.
More information than less, so I'd like you to end up looking at that in the, in the future. I had a conversation with Audra Potter, Jeff Potter had been the mayor here for a while there. And he's, we dedicated the initial part of the bike path to Jeff, because I, I was the guy on Parks and Rec at that time, and then got into city, our city council, and Jeff was ramrodding the whole thing with the bike path and that. Well, the, so we put up signs, one towards the Dixboro area, and one towards the Pontiac Trail area for that first run of bike path. Unfortunately, the one that was on the area around Pontiac Trail has disappeared, and Audra, or Andra was asking, you know, could I look into it? I don't know, I've asked a number of people, Jeff Archie and some others, that they didn't really have any idea what might have taken place. I thought at first it might have been where they ended up putting some of the, one of the posts that had that for, for heaven's sakes. For heaven's sakes.
Coming off of Pontiac Trail, or by where the park is?
Yeah.
By McHattie, in McHattie?
When Dana's pictures and things, the, yeah, were going up. I didn't know if maybe they had taken that head off and put it on there, but I don't think that that's likely, because I think that the whole thing had the same coloration, you know, from the sign itself and the post. But nonetheless, I'd hate to find out that it's been, it got knocked over by mowing or something like that, and it's sitting in the back of the DPW yard or something. And if it's not there, I would like us to end up getting a new one that can end up going back into that same location.
Do you recall if it was ever dedicated by the city or city council?
Oh, absolutely.
And if we know when that is, and we can do that, but I had conversations with our DPW superintendent, and he had no recollection of that, of those particular signs being up there, and I know you said.
Bob Martin was probably the DPW.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, the people that worked there, he was there for 15 years and did not even recall that sign, and I would, you know, trust his judgment, not remember, or if he saw.
Jeff's been gone for a long time, I mean, so.
Yeah, so, and I don't know when that might have been dedicated, but if we can find out when that was, and we can look at that, and then try to re-put, put something like that back up then.
Yeah, okay, I mean, you've got, you've got the model on the other side, so, I mean, you know that it's, you know, that we've got the art at least, so to remake one, I don't think would be onerous, so. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Bogert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The portage on that's at McHattie Park adjacent to the baseball diamond, is that maintained by the city?
Yes.
Okay, it's nearly overflowing.
Okay, I know it gets emptied weekly or bi-weekly, but I can check on it, though.
Yeah, I was at the concert on Friday, stepped over there, and it's not in too good a shape.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzweil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just two real quick points. First of all, Paul, I wanted to thank you, when I've had discussions with you about the pollinator gardens, it was, that are going to be installed, it was my understanding, and I think it probably still is, but you can correct me, that you were going to provide a plan of the plants that were going to go in, we were going to see everything. So it's not like this is being done, and you're just going in and installing it. We're going to have input as the plan begins to materialize, and you have something to present, that's my understanding.
Yeah, and that's why I asked council a couple of months ago about going out to the different pollinator gardens, because I wanted you to take a look, and I've gotten feedback from one or two people on it, nobody else responded, and I was trying to follow, you know, follow the pollinator garden that was, you know, recommended by the company, American Meadows, for the Midwest Pollinator Garden. Wasn't like I was choosing the different seed mixes and flowers and things like that, I was trying to apply something that was definitely, that would work, work in this particular area. And this was the first one looking at doing it, Volunteer Park, in an area that was open to the public, and I've had other conversations with additional council members about looking at where those other ones were located, and that's what I want to counsel, Deaton, to provide also, because we looked at some other area that was along the trail that was north of Princeton, that had some grassy area, some additional area potentially McHattie Park, or some more area at Volunteer Park. And I think getting the first one planted, people get a good look and seeing what's there, and then we move forward and figure all the other locations and how we want them planted, and even type in a different species and things that we're looking at. But the majority of the pollinator gardens that are being put in contain so many annuals, and then so many perennials that will come up in subsequent years.
Yeah, I just, now, Milford just put in a real nice, in fact, I was over there looking at it. It's over on Milford Road, and it's right, right by the bridge where they're building that new development, right down there by the river. It is blooming, it's gorgeous, I'll go back and get even more pictures of it. That would fit a smaller area, it's not what I would call a meadow garden. It's, it's, but it is absolutely gorgeous, and it is blooming. So that's the new one that's been installed in the area. So I just want to let you know, I was scheduled to go to Pennsylvania to look at what the University of Penn was doing, and then other events sort of occurred, and so that trip's been delayed. But, so there is that. And I think there was one more point, oh, it's on the landscaping contract. On the landscaping contracts, you know, here's the thing on landscaping contracts, and I know some of these guys personally. You have these landscapers and their employment force, and I don't know who you have, but most of them are laid off in November. And so you're not talking about, you know, massive landscaping companies where people are kept on board, you know, 12 months out of the year, unless, of course, they have other responsibilities like snow plowing or things like that. So what you want?
So what you want is a, a company that can sustain a crew that can come here and work. Because it's my understanding that there is a lot of work for them to do. We all know it. We've been screaming about this for years. So you may have to go outside the city a little bit to find somebody that has the, the staffing to do what we need done. Because this, there are projects that I want to work with this landscaper with down at Paul Baker Park that I physically cannot do. Guys in DPW, you know, they're, they're wonderful guys down there. But this is landscaping stuff, for Pete's sake, and you need somebody to go in and just do some things down there that haven't been done in seven and eight years. So there's going to be, in some, I think, in some of these places for this landscaper to come in and really do some restorative work and get some of our parks up to par, because we have neglected them for, for a very, very long time. Cutting the grass is not maintaining your landscaping. It, it's just not, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So Councilmember Kivell and I did visit those pollinator gardens in Plymouth and in Canton. And to Councilmember Kurtzwell's point, and the, I believe it was the one in Plymouth, and I, I may be mistaken, because I'm not the gardener. But it did include milkweed. It included black-eyed Susans. It included Queen Anne's Lace and some other things that, in a garden setting, look great. Okay, as opposed to just a one-off growing in somebody's front lawn. So those gardens did have some of those, you know, quote unquote weeds that, you know, somebody might term to be a weed, but it's actually a respectable part of a pollinator garden, so. And I think it was, if anybody does get the chance, they are worth going to take a look at there.
They are.
So it's relatively close by. Okay, thank you very much, Paul. Moving on to council comments, we'll start this evening with Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is going to be a very, very busy weekend for South Lyon coming up. It's just going to be a huge weekend, and I'm just so proud of the city. We're going to be packed with people. And why are we going to be packed with people? Well, the whole west side of Pontiac Trail is just going to be nothing but people and families from about nine o'clock in the morning until, I don't know, ten o'clock at night. And here's how it's going to work. We have our farmer's market that is coming up on Saturday. Please make sure that you attend the farmer's market. It's going to be great. We've got fall coming, so there's a lot of fall produce that's out in our farmer's market. Great zucchini, great cucumbers, by the way. The fall tomatoes are just great. Get out and eat good farm-grown vegetables. Please buy your produce at the farmer's market. And then from there, your next step is just head south on Pontiac Trail and get ready for Depot Days. Depot Days is huge, just absolutely huge, very well attended, great for families. Just come, enjoy. It's going to be a great afternoon. So you go to the farmer's market, hit the food trucks, have a little bit of lunch, head over to McHattie Park, and clearly enjoy all the activities for the kids. And then continue moving south on Pontiac Trail, because now we have St. Joseph's Polish Heritage Festival coming up, bigger than ever. They've got a Polish village, a Polish kitchen, the polka bands, the Kids' Corner. This is just absolutely going to be huge this year. They're expecting close to thirty-five to four thousand people coming into this festival. It's big, and I want to thank all the people in the city that have stepped forward and offered to help St. Joe's with this festival. So we must have a lot of Polish individuals here that want to relive some of their cultural heritage with their families. So anyway, please spend this, no, it's, it's not this weekend, it's the following weekend. Excuse me, everybody. I'm going to be in Sagatuck this weekend, so I'm, I'm thinking about me spending my time in Sagatuck and Douglas. I'm sorry. It's not this weekend. This weekend is Labor Day. It's the following weekend. It's the weekend of September seventh. So that is the weekend. Everybody needs to rebook and get into South Lyon. September seventh is the big weekend, so I apologize. It's been a long weekend. Thank you. Good night.
Councilmember Dilg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Maggie's covered it all. Happy Labor Day. That's all I have.
Councilmember Hanson?
Just a, a quick plug, I guess, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank the Painted Croc for just how they've really kind of changed up their business a bit. And we've had some new ownership that took over, took the kids there. She's got a great selection of pottery and ceramic pieces for the kids to take advantage of. So I wish the new owner all the best. The kids loved it. So there's a wide selection, as well as having chatted with the owner a bit. She's got quite a bit of new activities and events planned for kids of all ages, so definitely check out their Facebook page. They update pretty regularly. So just wanted to, you know, thank her for all that she did. Also wanted to put my two cents out for Tormina's Pizza here in South Lyon. There I was, waiting for my pizza, and the person who was manning the counter walked it out to my car while I was waiting. So thanks to that great customer service here in the city. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Kivell?
The house that we had, or that was being built on where the prior library had been, is getting very close to being ready to roll. They were doing the flatwork for the driveway today, and so that they're getting close to having a new family coming into that, that area. I think everybody's going to be excited that it's a nice-looking house. There's still stuff that is, has to be attended to, but I think that's going to end up being a nice, a nice place for people to live in it. And we'll end up getting a pretty reasonable investment back for giving that lot up, because it's, it's a very pricey house. So we'll end up having, I'm sure that they'll end up asking us for a little relief, but nonetheless, it's going to end up being good. So the neighbors are all happy about it. I have a weird idea about where the elevation is, but nonetheless, it's a pretty house. So I'm looking forward to finding out who ends up moving in there. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Kivell. Councilmember Moser?
Thank you. Everybody have a great Labor Day. That's number one. Number two, we still need volunteers for Pumpkin Fest and South Lyon Live. So if anybody's looking for something to do that weekend, you know, you can just go online and, and look it up. And other than that, I'm good.
Thank you. Councilmember Bogart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Friday, I had the honor of emceeing the final concerts in the park, which was the Randy Brock Group, great group, a great time. And I would just like to take a quick moment to acknowledge all of the city staff that helped make the series possible. As Lori mentioned, we have a definite need for volunteers for Pumpkin Fest and South Lyon Live. In case if you don't know what South Lyon Live is, it's a fundraiser concert that's happening simultaneously with Pumpkin Fest. Five bands. Proceeds benefit Operation Injured Soldiers, so it's a great cause. We have craft brews and drinks, and Kowalski is the title sponsor for the event, so they're going to be bringing their products in, too. And then finally, just a reminder to be mindful at crosswalks. Stop for pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bogart. Just a follow-up. This week, City Clerk Deaton emailed everyone the performance evaluation for the city manager. She can provide that form to you electronically if you need, as opposed to the hard copy. She would also like to have the completed forms submitted to her by Friday, September thirteenth, so she can compile the responses in preparation for the review. Does anyone have a problem meeting that date?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that gives you about three weeks to complete it. I really appreciate everybody's efforts in getting that together, so that we don't put the city clerk behind the eight ball in the last minute trying to put it all together, so we can go through the review. And finally, the, the only thing, I think, we listed all the other events that are happening. This Wednesday will be another Lake Street Cruisin's downtown, starting at six-thirty. So grab your friends and head downtown, grab some dinner, some drinks, and check out some great classic cars. And with that, I'll look for a motion in a second to adjourn. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Very good, folks. We'll see you on September ninth, I believe it is, at six-thirty.